That's close enough. Good evening and welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners June 16th, 2025 extraordinary session. I would ask that you please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I'd ask Commissioner Reginald Watts to deliver the invocation and Commissioner Ryan Bolden to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
That is great. In the powerful name of Jesus, Lord, we just want to thank you, Lord. And Lord, we just want to invite your presence in this place, God. Lord, we just ask that you let us decrease as you increase as we make decisions for this community, Lord, on your behalf for your people. It is in Jesus' name, your people have prayed. Amen. Amen. Amen.
If we please join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Presentations and presentation of financial statement. Ms. Erica Dai will provide the presentation of Spalding County's financial statement for May 2025.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
The upcoming presentation will summarize the county's financial activities for fiscal year 2025 as of March the 31st, covering revenue collections, expenditures, and encumbrances for the general fund and their fire fund budgets only. Eleven months have passed in the present fiscal year, which account for 94% of the budget. Fiscal year 2025 shows strong financial performance with revenues steadily increasing to $68.2 million as of May 31st, 2025. By May 30th, our revenues have increased by 3%. From July 2024 to May 2025 expenditures.
We'll take care of it.
There we go. From July 2024 to May 2025 expenditures rose steadily from 5.5 million to 58 million with an average monthly growth rate of 32.6%. The sharpest increase occurred in the early months, particularly August through October. Sorry, I'm going the wrong way. For the fire fund, our fire district revenues are at 10.7 million, constituting 113% of their budget. And the fire district expenditures are at 15.8 million, which includes 7.6 million in encumbrances for the new fire trucks, which accounts for 91% of the budget. The financial data highlights several encouraging trends. Do you got it? One more. There we go. The financial data you see on the screen highlights several encouraging trends. Revenue demonstrated strong potential with substantial surges in December and January, reaching a peak of 26.17 million, largely driven by the collection of property tax revenue. Expenditures followed a consistent and predictable growth pattern, rising from 5.46 million in July to 58 million in May. Meanwhile, our operating accounts bank balance remain resilient, experiencing a noticeable boost in February to 45.82 million and maintaining a healthy level of 41.36 million by May. These patterns reflect the county's strong financial stewardship and effective management of its fiscal position throughout the period. The financial overview chart that you see shows cumulative revenues and expenditures over fiscal year 25, indicating a strong increase in both. As of the end of May, revenues are higher than expenditures, which is a positive sign of the county's financial health. Next slide, please. For revenues, the county collected $55.6 million in taxes, representing 82% of the total revenue. These taxes include real property tax, interest and penalty on real and personal property, public utility tax, motor vehicle tax, abhorrent tax, tax and title fees, and our local option to sales tax and other taxes. Next slide. For charges for services, the county has collected 4.6 million, which accounts for 7% of the total. This amount includes various fees from purbate and magistrate courts, adult probation and supervision fee, our inmate housing costs, medical and clothing reimbursements for both the correctional institute and the sheriff's office, as well as revenue from animal control, recreation fees, scrap iron sales, and our tax collection fees. Next slide. For intergovernmental revenue, the total comes in at 3.2 million, comprising of 5% of total reported revenue. These revenues are from local and state federal sources, including our real estate transfer tax, our Georgia Highway Safety and Cox Grant, our Performance Partnership Award, Accountability Court Grants, and DOT reimbursements. For fines and forfeitures, Spalding County generated 1.8 million or 3% of the total revenue from Superior Court, magistrate, clerk of court fees, and victim assistant and drug abuse court fines. Miscellaneous revenue is 1.7%, 7 million or 2%, including income from resource officers and sheriff office inmate phone commissions, inmate store commissions, as well as our CI detailed reimbursement, motor coach trips, and sale of surplus property and equipment and spay and neuter fees. For licensing permits, which includes our business license, our alcohol permits, sewer inspections, zoning and subdivision, marriage license, and pistol permits, accounts for 984,000 or 1%. And finally, for revenues, the investment income accounts for 239,000 and our contributions and donations account for 32,000. Next, we'll move on to the expenditures. Employees salaries, benefits, and FICA taxes account for 59% or 34.3 million of total expenditures. The expenditures for purchases and contractual services, which include things like radio and computer equipment, software, office equipment maintenance, travel expenses, legal fees, education and training costs, election expense, telephone and postage, and auto and truck maintenance, account for 27% of total expenditures or 15.6 million. Supplies, including our office and departmental supplies, the utilities, uniforms, and fuel and small equipment, account for 8% or 4.5 million of total expenditures. Capital outlay accounts for 3% or 1.5 million, which includes supplies for materials for our new playgrounds, our new and improved walking trails, the master park plan, vehicles, and park machinery and equipment. Other costs account for 2% or $1 million. This includes various park repairs and supply reimbursements for T-SLOSS paving and sidewalk reimbursements, street lights, the GSDA, airport, health department, and the library. For debt service, this includes our enterprise vehicles principal and interest, Naresco capital lease principal and interest, and other lease principal and interest payments, accounts for 1% or 847,000. And finally, the bank balances as of May 31st. The Truist Bank operating checking account demonstrated strong financial resilience and an effective cash flow management throughout the reporting period from July 24 to May 2025. Beginning with a healthy balance of 28.27 million in July, the account has experienced expected fluctuations aligned with the county's revenue and expenditure cycles. Despite a gradual decline through the fall months, the account maintained stability, reaching 13.52 million by December. A significant rebound occurred in January 2025 with the balance more than doubling to 24.5 million, followed by a peak of 45.82 million in February. This increases reflects the successful collection of property tax revenues and prudent financial oversight. This account continues to perform well through the spring, maintaining a strong balance of 35.6 million by the end of May. Overall, the data reflects a well-managed operating account with strategic timing and revenue inflows and controlled expenditures, contributing to a consistently strong financial position as of May 31st. The total balance for as of May 31st is $64.5 million across all checking and investment accounts in Spalding County, which reflects the cumulative financial assets held by the county. This concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any of your questions.
I like all those numbers. So, thank you for all of that. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Three, zero. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, presentations and proclamation. Presentation of the fiscal year 2026 budget ordinance. The Board of Commissioners voted to approve the FY 26 budget on June 2nd, 2025. We have 30 days to upload our budget along with the budget resolution and ordinance to various state of Georgia departments. In order to be able to be in compliance with state law, tonight, we are ratifying. Ratifying, thank you, the resolution and ordinance to allow states to upload, allow the state to upload information in timely manner. Ms. Dai, is there any, is there a presentation for the proclamation?
Yes, sir. I have presented you all the paper copies of the budget ordinance. As required by Title 36, Chapter 81 of the Official Code of Georgia, Section 2-5003 of our local code, this budget represents a balanced financial plan for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 and ending June 30, 2026. This ordinance reflects months of careful planning, collaboration, and public input. The total general fund balance budget is 75.6 million, supported primarily by tax revenues, service charges, and intergovernmental funding. These funds will support essential services, including public safety, courts, public works, parks and wrecks, and general government operations. Finally, the ordinance grants the county manager authority to manage appropriations within departments while maintaining oversight and accountability through the board's approval for inter-fund transfers and salary adjustments. This budget reflects our shared commitment to fiscal responsibility, transparency, and service to the citizens of Spalding County. I respectfully request your approval of the FY 2026 budget ordinance.
This is a big deal. All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Three, zero. Now, remember, everybody, this is, we did this on June 2nd, so this is just cleaning the paperwork up to be able to get it all loaded up to different places.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a presentation of the Local Government Scrap Tire Abatement Reimbursement Grant. Mr. Larry Wallace will present the information to us this evening. Welcome back, Larry.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Davis, Commissioners, Dr. Ledbetter. I bring before you tonight a request to accept a grant award from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Environmental Protection Division. Spalding County has been awarded a $19,463 grant through the Local Government Scrap Tire Abatement Reimbursement Program. This grant will reimburse the county for costs associated with removing illegally dumped scrap tires from the property on Yama Crow Road. The grant agreement requires us to begin tire removal within 90 days of signing and complete the project within 12 months. We must also submit detailed documentation, including invoices, photos, and manifests for reimbursement. This is a 100% reimbursable grant, meaning the county will be fully compensated for approved cleanup costs up to the $19,463 award amount. I recommend that the board accept this grant award and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement. Any questions?
We always like it when you bring money to us, Larry, so thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve?
To approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising our hands. Three, zero. Motion carries. Thank you, Larry. Just a minute.
Mr. Chair, no one has signed up for citizen comments this evening.
Thank you. Minutes. Consider approval of the May 19th, 2025 Spalding County Board of Commissioners Extraordinary Minutes, the June 2nd, 2025 Work Session Minutes, and the June 2nd, 2025 Spalding County Board of Commissioners Regular Minutes. At this time, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Three, zero. Motion carries. Item number eight, consent agenda. Dr. Ledbetter, would you please read the items with the consent agenda for the record?
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to do so. Item number one, consideration of amplification permit at Mystic Acres, 1631 Williamson Road, Kinsenyetta, on July 5, 2025, venue rented from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., which includes preparation and cleanup, staff recommendation approval. Kinsenyetta on July 5, 2025 at Mystic Acres, an approved event center for several years, venue rented for that particular reason. Item number two, consideration of amplification permit at Mystic Acres, 1631 Williamson Road, wedding on July 11, 2025, venue rented from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., which includes preparation and cleanup, staff recommendation approval. Item number three, consideration of amplification permit at Mystic Acres, 1631 Williamson Road, birthday party on July 12, 2025, venue rented from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., which includes preparation and cleanup, staff recommendation approval. Item number four, consideration of amplification permit at Mystic Acres, 1631 Williamson Road, church event on July 13, 2025, venue rented from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., which includes preparation and cleanup, staff recommendation approval. Number five, consideration of amplification permit at Mystic Acres, 1631 Williamson Road, wedding on July 19, 2025, venue rented from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., which includes preparation and cleanup, staff recommendation approval. Item number six, consideration of amplification permit at Mystic Acres, 1631 Williamson Road, wedding on July 26, 2025, venue rented from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., which includes preparation and cleanup, staff recommendation approval. Consideration of application permit at, sorry, amplification permit at 408 Ellis Dairy Road, Family Fun Day on July 5, 2025, 2:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m., staff recommendation denial. Consideration of amplification permit at 408 Ellis Dairy Road, Family Fun Day on July 4, 2025, 3:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m., staff recommendation denial. Mr. Chair, the Community Development Director, Mr. Allen, is present for any questions that the board may have.
Let's make sure the three of us are all square on this. We're trying to get a meeting where all five of us can sit down and talk about this. Until we get that meeting and can provide new guidance to the staff, we're working under the old guidance. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. We understand there's some issues with it, but until we, the five of us can sit down and talk about it, we got to stay with the old guidance. All right.
And concerning Mystic Acres, the first four, the first six items on here, that is so the workshop has been postponed to probably July. So they are staying the course with the current process, which has provided the amp permits for you for 30 days in advance. Again, it's an approved event center.
Mr. Chair, if the board would be so inclined to pull the first six out and vet those through consent agenda, then we can have a conversation about the other two.
Do I have a motion to approve this first six?
A move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Three, zero. The first six are approved.
All right, regarding items seven and eight at 408 Ellis Dairy Road, a family fun day on both of those days. The applicants are here. I did have concerns about the, there will be some, as described in the events, there will be, I'm trying to get some exact wording here. July 4th, we will have bounce houses, games, food, live music entertainment, horseback and carriage rides, and a fireworks show. On July 5th, the next day, we will have bounce houses, games, food, live music entertainment, horseback and carriage rides. When I had asked them about what I had heard about possibly people staying overnight, they said, yes, we will have some people staying overnight, that they have an RV, camper, or other facilities. I assume some of the horse people that will be engaging in this will probably bring some horses as well. So I just had some concerns about the scope of this and definitely the overnight aspect of it. I don't know, that could possibly be an option that could be removed. I don't know. But again, the applicants are here. If you want questions for them, it seemed like quite a bit going on, and especially the overnight aspect of it bothered me, so.
Thoughts, Eric County Manager?
There are concerns. The ordinance does not permit for an amplification permit that allows for an overnight stay. So that's why the staff has recommended denial for this particular one. If it was for one day and everyone left, and then they came back for the second day, I don't think staff would have an issue with that. It was just the overnight issues.
All right, now, can we turn around and, if they can change their, the way it's written and take out the overnight, would we probably approve it?
I wouldn't see an issue.
That was my main issue.
All right.
Of course, we have, now, I'm new to this, so I don't know how y'all feel about fireworks and stuff, the commercial grade fireworks and all. I know plenty of people shoot them, so I don't think that's the main issue here. It's mainly the overnight part.
My issue with it is if we deny it, there's no option for a year or whatever the right thing. Correct?
There would be no option for them to have it this time. They could come back for subsequent amplification permits. The challenge that I have with the fireworks is if they are charging for an event center, they cannot have fireworks under the new state law without filing for a permit through the fire department. That's an arduous task right now, and our fire department is running through some wickets to make sure that they're up to speed. The law just has changed in the last few months from the last session. But if you charge anything for an event center and you offer fireworks, you have to file for a commercial fireworks license. You can't use off-the-shelf fireworks, which would require a lot of challenges for an event center if they are offering fireworks. And I think that would be the secondary piece that I would ask you to consider.
All right, do I have a motion to deny?
You've got a person in the audience who is asking.
This is the applicant.
The applicant was asking to speak, but you don't have to, you don't have to listen. It's up to you if you want to move forward with a, with a motion.
Have we usually let them speak?
It's, yeah, it does. It varies.
Okay, yes. You can have three minutes. We'll set it up. If one of you wants to come forward and speak for three minutes on this issue. Thank you.
My name is Reginald Gates.
If you would, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Reginald Gates. I'm at 408 Ellis Dairy Road in Griffin, 30224. I've been in Griffin for 10 years. I moved from Atlanta. I bought a property. It's a nonprofit organization, through the Gates Restoration Ranch. We've been in business in Griffin for 10 years. We never came to request anything from Griffin. We never had any issues for us about, for us about overnight staying. It is not, it's not about overnight staying. It's about that people that come from, come from out of town with their horses after, late in the evening, we have an area where they can sleep and still with their tents. I mean, with their tent, they sleep, get up the next morning, drive, still trying to drive out later on that night. But, I mean, and for the fireworks go, it's fireworks that purchase from Walmart. It's not commercial fireworks. It's not commercial fireworks. I don't know where that came from. It's fireworks that Walmart sells.
Okay. All right, sir.
But if y'all could please reconsider and let us have this event, we've been doing this for a while. The reason we here requesting for an event because we start inviting the public. And when it got too big, that's when they said we need to bit for the noise. We need approval for the noise, but this extra stuff, if they can't spend the night, that's fine. We'll tell them no staying all night. But it means a lot to the community for us to have that, because we've been doing it for 10 years. And there have been no issues, no problem, nothing brought before you guys in reference to that.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I want to make sure I understand. No, you're, thank you. The state law says that they have to get commercial.
If they're doing an event, the way the state law has just changed, and we learned about this last Monday, last Monday morning, because our fire chief was working very diligently to figure out how he was going to permit for, for the fireworks. But if there is, if there is a public event where any event center is asking for people to pay or make contribution for that event, it's not us that is asking them to hire a professional fireworks crew to do the fireworks. It is the state of Georgia that's asking for that. And they require not only for the individual to hire the firm that does the fireworks, but they cannot legally go and purchase fireworks from Walmart or any of the other locations. They have to use a firm who has insurance and can take care of the fireworks should something happen. They've got liability insurance for it. But we learned about that last week. I think that that would be a challenge for us with a lot of people that are participating in an event to not bring in a professional fireworks team. I think we would be in violation of that particular state law. And I don't have the code section. I'll be more than happy to find that for us later this evening.
All right, the staff is recommending denial?
I'll make a motion to deny.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this? Sorry, this is happening kind of at the last minute for us, not to be able to back up and give you some time to be able to do something else. All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Three, zero. Motion to deny. New business. Next on the agenda this evening, under new business is the consideration of the roofing contract for Flint River Regional Library. I believe Mr. Lance Griffin, our construction and maintenance director, is here this evening to present the material. Welcome back, Lance.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. So, we have went through a process looking with Garland and other companies to find someone to help us with the aging roof of the library. 1974 was the original installation of the roof. It's only been patched since that day, never been properly fixed. Bert with Garland will be able to give you more details, but they are guaranteeing a 30-year warranty. Natalie is here with the Flint River Library, where they're going to give us $150,000 in 2025 budget and $150,000 in 2026 budget to cover some of the costs. But then Bert can kind of explain to you the specs on the roof. You got anything for me?
We need to go through this. We've all talked about this during, this was all set up in our budget time. If you remember, Steve brought it forth and said, here's the money for this. Here's the next year. We'll put the money in for that. So this money is all set up to be able to do that. And you've already taken care of the roofing contract and all that business. All right.
We're working, it's not a contract.
This is a proposal. That's correct. We are working through a proposal. We'll bring the contract back to you at a later date.
I have reviewed their template contract. They did send it to me right before this meeting, so it's fine. It just needs the appropriate blanks filled in.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the proposal?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Three, zero. Thank you, Lance. Thank you, Bert. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the consideration of Park at Roswell, acquisition of Jefferson Street site by the Griffin Spalding Housing Authority regarding the following items. Development plan approval, deeds, legal documents, plat, replat application. I believe Kim Walker and Rochelle Patton are here to present the board. Ladies, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Rochelle Patton, the president of Collaborative Housing Solutions.
Good afternoon. Kimberly Walker with, um, Griffin Housing Authority.
Uh, we are the development partner of the Griffin Housing Authority and very excited to be coming here finally, after a long journey of trying to get our financing in place and get through the designs. Um, as you saw, there's three different reasons that were coming before you tonight. The first one is that as part of, let me back up a second. You might recall that we came a couple of years ago to ask for y'all's support for the housing authority to purchase a portion of the old Rosenwald School site. It's the old, um, uh, equalization building, as we call it, the old annex building, as well as basically the ball field, the green space. And, um, we appreciated the vote of confidence to build a hundred and sixty, excuse me, a hundred and thirty-eight units on that property. Um, these is affordable and attainable housing for workforce housing. Um, the housing authority and collaborative will be joint venture partners, not only for the development, but for the long-term ownership. So I personally will be a property owner for at least fifteen years. Um, we will have land use restrictions on for thirty years to serve, uh, low income folks. Most of our tenants are working folks and families. Um, and in part of that, um, approval process, we're now ready in about three weeks for the housing authority to purchase the site. It's tar- targeted for a July ninth closing. That's with closing with all of our financing as well as purchasing the site. Um, what will happen then is the housing authority will then own the land and the building. And then the partnership with us and our investors will own the buildings themselves. The housing authority and the partnership will enter into a long-term ninety-nine year ground lease, so that the, the housing authority will continue to own the land. Um, so it continues to be in public, um, agency ownership for the long term. Um, what we promised as part of that approval back then is that we would come to you with our design. Um, and we promised to make sure that the property was, the buildings were designed in a way that was consistent with the housing authority's Merriweather redevelopment. As you might recall, it was done in three phases. Um, and what we have here tonight is both up on the screen, but also, um, in, uh, in your hands. And I've also got big posters, but I think you can see it much better close up. But I've got the posters if you want them. Um, this is a drawing of what our buildings will look like. Um, you can go through to the next page shows what the actual, um, old annex, what some people call the equalization building will look like. We did work with the SHPO, the State Historic Preservation folks. Um, and they have approved this design. So basically we will be, you know, uh, uh, making sure all the brick stays on there. We're not painting the brick, but we're making sure and cleaning it. We're putting new windows in, uh, new roof, all new systems, of course, plumbing, electrical and, um, HVAC. It'll be a community building where we'll have our property management, um, community room for community meetings, um, not just with the residents, but with the greater neighborhood. Uh, we'll have a laundry facility for our residents, our maintenance shed, but also, um, like I said, a community room with a warming kitchen, so we can have birthday parties and baby showers and things, community meetings, as well as an arts and crafts room and a business center with, uh, free wifi and computers for residents. Um, if you go to the next page, that's our whole site plan. Um, you will see that we have five buildings. Um, the facades will look the same. It's just, um, the number of units per building. Then you can see where, you know, our, um, new community building, or I guess the renovated community building will be, which is right up against the current gymnasium. Um, Steve can attest that we have met with the county, um, as the county was putting together y'all's plans, um, to make sure that the, we are being consistent with what your plans are. Um, Kim and I were talking about how exciting it will be to have this multi-use campus when it's all done. Between the current museum, our, um, community building, the new residences, and then when y'all put up the new, um, event space, uh, we really feel like this is a wonderful addition to the community to amplify, you know, uh, uh, under-resourced property for many years. Um, we also have been working with our general contractor who knows that we will be as collaborative, no pun intended, as possible, because we're, we know that you all will be starting construction at some point, likely while we are under construction. And we absolutely will work together to make sure that it's as seamless as possible, though there'll be a lot of, you know, contractors all over the property. Um, if you go to the last site, um, this is one of the properties that we own right now. Um, Griffin Village up on Williamson Road, three sixty-two. It's now up and running. Um, I know that's been a long journey too, uh, but that gives you real life of what the buildings will look like and the way that we upkeep our properties. It'll be the same property management company, Gateway Management, who also owns Tranquility at Griffin, as y'all might know, that property as well. Um, you can see up at the top, the kitchen there. That's our, you know, um, apartment kitchens. We're using the same finishes for, um, what we call the Park at Rosenwald, so that'll be, um, on our site. So that gives you a good sense, um, of the community space. There's the business center. But you also can drive through it, or I'd be happy to at any point, if any of you all want to come and take a tour, happy to walk you through it as well. Um, the housing authority is in for the long term, so are we. Um, so like I said, we have land use restrictions for thirty years, so, um, we're not going anywhere. And as you know, the housing authority has done a good job of maintaining the properties that they own in partnership. Um, and of course, we've got Fairmont, um, homes right across the street. Um, because we will, um, the housing authority is also buying the old Roseview Apartments property at North Sixth Street, which you know is about a quarter of a mile away, is the crow flies from this property. Um, we'll also be building more apartments, uh, for workforce housing as well. So altogether, it'll be a hundred and sixty-six homes. Again, on the county site here, that the housing authority of purchasing is a hundred and thirty-eight homes.
You know, it's wonderful coming and seeing this finally starting to be beyond a dream. You know, this is all happening.
I know it's been far over ten years, um, with people way before my time. Um, Kim, this is your sixteenth year? How many years with the housing authority?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. So Kim has been here from the beginning, as well as Bob Dole, who sends his regards. So it's a dream come true, I hope, for everyone.
All right, uh, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the Park at Rosenwald acquisition for Je- Jefferson Street site by the Griffin Spalding Housing Authority regarding the following development plan approval, deed, legal docs, plat, replat application. Do I have a motion to approve?
Folks to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anything from either one of you two?
They are just exercising an option that you've previously granted. Um, I have, I've renewed the documents that you requested assigned for closing, and they have made the changes I suggested.
Okay, all right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Three, approved. Thank you.
Great, and we'll follow up to get the signature we need on the application.
All right, thank you much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. We hope to break ground, um, in early July.
That's a dream come true. Takes a while.
Absolutely, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consideration of a ground lease by Towercom VC LLC for eighteen forty-three North Hill Street Extension, Griffin, Georgia two zero three, two, two, three, for the placement of a cellular tower. I believe our county attorney made a few changes to the proposed contract. Also, at this is the first step in the process. The plan to move forward with a tower at this location will still require the applicant to move through the planning commission and special exemption, exception process for the final approval. Any comments from one of you two?
Um, Mr. Chairman, there are just several, thi- this lease is, was not a lease with government entities. Um, so that's why there were several changes that needed to be made regarding some of the language, particularly involving, um, indemnification and other things that could be deemed to be a gratuity. So those changes will need to be, uh, approved, um, by the, the cell tower folks as well, but you could approve it with my changes tonight.
Staff, you agree with that?
I agree.
Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the ground lease by Tower, uh, Towercom VC LLC for eighteen forty-three North Hills Extension, Griffin, Georgia three zero two, two, three, for the placement of the cellular tower with the changes made by our county attorney to the proposed contract. Furthermore, this is the first step in the process. The plan to move forward with the tower at this location would require the applicant to move through the planning commission and special exception process for the final approval. Do you have a motion? Mo- do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appro- or a motion to, uh, to approve it, um, with all the.
Words I said.
Yeah, the stipulations, yeah.
And, and do I have a second?
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Three, zero, motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consideration of establishing a fee schedule for alcohol server IDs and background checks. Uh, I would like to ask, uh, Director Allen to step forward and, uh, discuss this with us.
All right, uh, so recent changes to the alcohol ordinance will go into effect July first. Uh, employees of various restaurants, grocery stores, liquor stores, convenience stores that serve alcohol will be required to get a badge, a county issued badge. So they will come up to our department, um, submit to a background check first, wait for that to come back. If that's cleared, they will get the badge from our machine that's got delivered the other day. As a matter of fact, I have a picture on the badge as well with their information. Um, so right now, it, as I said, it involves the background check, which is fifteen dollars no matter what, uh, for Spalding County. Um, so we need to assess a fee for the badge itself. Having your staff report, uh, several nearby municipalities and their various prices. Fayetteville is twenty-five for the badge, ten dollars for the background check. Fayette County is thirty dollars total, which includes everything. Jonesburg is twenty-five total, which includes everything. Uh, staff, as far as I was concerned, and me and the county manager have had a discussion about this, was recommend tw- recommending twenty dollars for the badge, plus the fifteen dollar background check would be a thirty-five dollar total. Uh, the county manager has some information about possibly a thirty dollar total. Uh, whichever, I would not go less than thirty. Um, so it's up to the board, what you want to assess for that fee.
And so the commissioners know, the other two commissioners have, uh, agreed to thirty dollars for this? All right, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the fee schedule for alcohol server IDs and background checks for a total of thirty dollars, fifteen dollars for the background check and fifteen dollars for the permit. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Three, zero, motion carries. Next up is a cons- consider commissioning a mental health work group and appointing members to this group. The Spalding County Board of Commissioners recognizes the urgent and growing need to address mental health challenges within our community and is therefore establishing a mental health work group to support and enhance local mental health initiatives. This five-member group will serve as a dedicated body to assess community needs, identify service gaps and recommend actionable strategies to improve mental health outcomes for our residents. Appointment by the chair, in collaboration with the full board of commissioners, the members will bring diverse perspective and expertise to ensure a comprehensive and inclusive approach. By standing up this work group, the board affirms its commitment to fostering a healthier, more resilient community through proactive leadership and collaborative problem solving. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Uh, so, uh, excuse me for while I'm in the discussions phasing of this. Um, I'm planning on, uh, make, uh, asking and has already approved verbally Commissioner of Flint, uh, Gwen Flowers Taylor to be as the chair and Kenyatta Walker as an ad hoc advisory member to the work group. Uh, all right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the CSBG FY twenty-five budget amendment two. I believe that, uh, there's a conflict of, uh, scheduling conflict, and Dr. Ledbetter will be, uh, discussing this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Spalding County has received an additional twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-five cents in community service block grant funding through amendment two, bringing the total fiscal year twenty-five allocation to three hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred twenty-two dollars and a penny. Uh, these, these funds administered through the Georgia Department of Human Services and managed locally by Three Rivers Regional Commissioner are designed to support services for low to moderate income individuals and households. While no new programs are being introduced, the additional funds will enhance the existing senior nutrition meals program, included home delivery meals, equipment purchases and technology upgrades to improve service delivery. The budget also supports educational init- initiatives such as, uh, the school and tut- uh, tutorial programs through the Salvation Army and the Fairmont Tutorial Program. Youth nutrition via the Backpack and Food for Kids Program and agency capacity building through software licensing and training. Administrative oversight remains at fifteen percent of the total grant funds, ensuring compliance and effective program management. All expenditures are aligned with CSBG service categories and are subject to approval by the Spalding County Board of Commissioners this evening through your vote. Staff's recommendation is that you accept these funds for these programs.
We always like to accept three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion to approve?
Folks to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Three, zero, motion carries. Next on the agenda is for the Board of Commissioners to consider a change order to address remediation for Irving Avenue. Doctor Ledbetter?
Yes, sir. It appears that, um, pavement of the roadway was less than an inch and three-quarter inches when our, uh, contractor ER Snell began the milling process. And as the cer- resurfacing company milled the road, they exposed the subsurface dirt amongst the roadway. Uh, so we converted one of our paved roads to a dirt, back to a dirt road, which is not a good thing. Uh, the paving company will need to remediate the roadway. Basically, they will need to repave the road, not resurface it. There's enough money for this remediation in the contingency of this year's T- T-SPLAS funding. However, there is not a line item in the contract for remediation, so we could not just move those funds, the contingency funds to satisfy this requirement. So as such, this will be treated as a change order and will require Board of Commissioner approval. Uh, the cost is, um, sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars for this remediation. And the funds are available for this year through our T-SPLAS program, so this will not be an impact to our general fund budget. Staff's recommendation is that you approve this expenditure.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just to make sure everybody understands, uh, the T-SPLAS is very specific on, uh, dollars and locations. This is not something we move. We don't add new s- s- roads in there. We don't take roads out of the T-SPLAS. We took it to the, uh, citizens. They voted on it. It was voted on by dollars. We would run the money down and do the amount of roads we had, depending on what inflation was for the, be able to do it. We've been able to do that pretty well. So moving money around in there is a big deal to us. Uh, all right, uh, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the change order to address. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the change order to address remediation of Irving Avenue in the amount of $64,965, and for those funds to come from T-SPLAS. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in fa, oh, excuse me, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Three, zero. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is for us to consider a change order for the intersection safety improvement at Locust Grove Road and Jackson Road. Doctor Ledbetter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would ask that you go to the next slide if you don't mind. Thank you. Several alternatives were considered in the safety assessment of Locust Grove and Jackson Road intersection. Working with engineers who performed an extensive analysis and traffic study, Alternative Two proposes realigning the southbound approach of Locust Grove Road into a single lane and converting the intersection to an all-way stop, aiming to enhance safety and improve traffic operations and cost effectiveness. This configuration is designed to reduce high-speed angle crashes, manage conflict points, and moderate vehicle speeds. Capacity analysis for both 2026 and 2046 indicate that the all-way stop will maintain acceptable levels of service, especially under lower traffic volumes. Additional safety enhancements include improved intersection lighting, reflective pavement markings, rumble strips, advanced warning signage, and potential speed feedback signs. Access management strategies for a nearby gas station are also recommended to reduce traffic conflicts. The project is highly feasible, requiring no additional right-of-way or utility relocations. And E.R. Snell, who is currently working to repave Jackson Road, has provided a bid of $88,209.93. Overall, the alternative number two offers a practical, low-cost solution that prioritizes safety and operational efficiency for both current and future traffic conditions. These funds are available using fiscal year 2025 road improvement funds. These funds are not from our T-SPLAS but are directly from the $1 million road improvement fund that the board approves each year during our budget process. Staff's recommendation is that you approve this redesign of this roadway for safety purposes and institute a all-way stop for this intersection to improve safety at a cost of $88,209.93.
This is a good thing. I've been on that intersection many times. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Three, zero. Motion carries. Item number 10, report of the county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to step back to the Jackson Road discussion for just a second. Rain has caused delays this year for our resurfacing. Jackson Road has been the primary culprit, or not culprit, but the primary recipient of the delays for our repaving. So please be patient with us, as we have experienced 12 inches of rain in the last 45 days. May and June are typically right around three inches as a normal rain recipient for Spalding County, and this, this year, we have received far more, far more rain than we typically do, so that's created some challenges for our contractor. The Aquatic Center is closed for safety reasons, but not for what you might think. The Department of Health requires, the Department of Health requires that public pools have a dedicated emergency telephone line that uses copper wiring to place calls for emergencies. It's a dedicated system. Our regular phone system, which is a voice-over IP or a digital system, does not meet that requirement. Unfortunately, the copper-lined phone system was struck by lightning this past weekend, and it is inoperable. Conversely, the digital system is operating normally, but we cannot use the digital system to make 911 calls. That, the Department of Health will not allow that to happen. Since the copper-lined system is not working, the Department of Health requires that we close the facility until the system is operational. We have dedicated someone from the county to work, to have AT&amp;T make the necessary repairs, and they have been working all day long trying to get AT&amp;T to support and help us to get that line back up, but they, that line was struck by lightning, so it's going to be maybe a day or two before we have that system back up. We will let everyone know when we expect it to be open, as we are in a queue for AT&amp;T maintenance. That, again, might take a couple of days, but we will keep everyone informed as to when we get the system back up and operational. Mr. Chair, outside of that, that's my report this evening.
A report from the deputy county manager?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of items. I wanted to remind everyone about the bulky days at our Carver Road and Woodruff Collection Centers. It will be this Wednesday, June the 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and also Wednesday, June the 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. And also wanted to remind everybody, and I'm sure the commissioners will remember this as well, the Juneteenth Parade will be this Saturday morning, June the 21st, at 10:00 a.m. And that's all I have.
Just as an aside, if you need a schedule for when the bulky days and the centers are going to be up, and we do have copies of the schedule here at the front, you're more than welcome to stop by and pick one up. It's also posted online. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Watts?
Yes, I want to encourage the community to come out to the Juneteenth Parade this Saturday at 10 o'clock. And after the parade, the festivities will continue at City Park at 12 o'clock. So guys, come out. I know the people that have been planning this, it's been a whole year of preparation. So make sure the community to come out, it's going to be a great event.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bolden?
We rescheduled our little community meeting for July the 12th out at Fairview Baptist. Look forward to seeing everybody out there. I'd sent an email one day last week looking for the minutes for the May 22nd zoning meeting. Do we do, do we do minutes for that?
We do.
Yes. I'm just kind of, I'm just looking for it. Had a couple of people asking for it.
Yes, sir. I'll get with Director Allen, and we'll get those minutes to you.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to go to and watch the Habitat for Humanities opening a brand-new house that they built for our community. I listened to people talk about everybody putting their hands together and pounding nails and doing stuff like that, when in fact, in my belief, it is all about hearts, putting hearts together to be able to do something for a family. That family is going to have what I consider a generational financial change. They will own a home. That changes everybody's belief in money and what that is like. So that was a really good thing that we appreciate, what the Habitat for Humanities has done for us. They have others going on in the community right now. Reminder, tomorrow is Election Day. Please come out if you haven't voted already and vote. It's important. The people who are running will decide our electrical prices, and I want to try to keep those as reasonable as possible, so please take a look at who they are and take an opportunity to vote. I also want to remind the commissioners to the Juneteenth at 10 o'clock, the commissioners, please come and walk with us to be able to do that. Prayers for Cheryl and your family and all that you're going through. I'm sorry for that has to happen to anybody. I want to thank TJ and the board for, we're starting to do sidewalk repair in both Haron Bay and in Sun City. That's a big project. We do it twice a year to take care of any sidewalks that have raised up because of roots or things like that, or heat, and twice a year we get to do it. And I want to thank TJ for taking care of that. On Wednesday, the Lieutenant Governor's Field Rep is going to be in this room from 2:00 to 4:00. If you have something you would like to talk to the, get the Lieutenant Governor's help on, the first step is usually to get to the field rep, and he will take it and talk to you about your issue, whatever that is, on then. And then I also want to remind everybody how fast I thought Highway 16 was done. It went out as a water main break. The road sinkhole, for want of a better term, what I use, had to be redone all the way around, not just put resurfacing on it, had to be basically rebuilt. We did it over the weekend when we, once we got it, and from Friday night to Saturday, Sunday morning, and when Monday morning came around, the Highway 16 was opened back up again to be able to do that. We would like to think that that was, since this is a state highway, that the state highway was going to do all of that. Our great county manager took care and made sure that all that stuff was done. Anything else from the county attorney?
Yes, sir.
Deputy citizen engagement?
Well, yes, sir. First of all, I want to thank you all for that first listening session. It went very well. Commissioner Chairman and Commissioner Watts, and Dr. Ledbetter, you all did a fantastic job of getting positive feedback, you know, from different citizens that came out. So I want to thank you for, you know, taking your time to answer the question. They kept you there past 12:30, but you all handled it well. And our next listening session will be at Fairmont Baptist Church, Fairview Baptist Church on July the 12th, and then we'll be listening at the Legacy on July the 19th. And also, just a reminder, when you begin to think about appointing different ones for the board, different boards, we have freshly graduated, we have Spalding U graduates that you can kind of consider that they've gone through the process and learned about our county, so you may want to think of that, that's the pool of applicants that you can get to be able to serve on different boards that we have in Spalding County.
Awesome. Why don't you, excuse me, why don't you reach out to those people, get them to fill out the nomination forms and send them in to us so that we take that, and then we'll be able to do that? We've got six months to be able to do that, but let's get that all set up.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else from the board? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand.